Padma Vibhushan, Dr. R A Masalkar, Chairman, New Energy Council Reliance Industry and former DG CSR. Welcome sir. Mr. Hamza Arshivala, Vice President EMA. Mr. Vijay Karya, DG Ilak Bharat, Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, a very good morning. It is a matter of privilege for me to share the frame with one of India's most famous Padma Vibhushan Dr. Masalkar. An eminent scientist, he is known for his contribution to India's National Chemical Laboratory in Council of Scientific and Industrial Research. Multiple Masalkar committees and a successful campaign against foreign patents on Indian traditional knowledge, his mantra of inclusive innovation, more from less for more and Gandhian engineering have been a constant source of inspiration for corporate and youths alike. Sir, to give you a bit of brief about EMA, we are a US dollar fifty billion industry with about eight billion of export. We constitute about fifty-five percent of the total capital goods sector in India and ninety percent of our electrical equipment in India is being manufactured and served by our members. Our membership and competencies range from generation all the way to distribution, from renewable to storage and from smart metering to cybersecurity. So that's who we are. And this DJ line Bharat is a culmination of digitization and indigenization. Taking forward the clarion call of our Honorable Minister, Prime Minister of Atmanirban Bharat and import substitution in the ever-changing technological space. So we are also very active when it comes to the national needs in terms of disaster management. We have actively worked with government of India and state governments of Odisha and Assam in restoring the power network during the natural disasters. Going forward, EMA will work on four pillars. One is technology, development and adaptation. So we look at electric vehicle, renewable and also cybersecurity space as something where we and our members can develop and contribute to the nation building in terms of technology. We also work on policy which is from procurement, tendering, all the way to commercial realization. One of our other focuses on international business which is export competitiveness and market access. Last but not the least, one of our other focuses quality and safety for which we can't even say more than what it has already been talked about in press. Sir, on a personal front, the only time I realized the importance of hydrogen was we had to do the balance in the ten standard chemistry. But we are very fortunate that we have us today and we know hydrogen will play a very critical role in our industry and we are extremely excited and as well as anxious to hear about your views on this. So pardon our ignorance and do enlighten us. I went over to our Chairman, DG Ilak Vijay Karya for his welcome address. Thank you and welcome sir.
Thank you sir. Welcome, a very warm welcome to Dr. R A Masalkar. My personal thanks to him because he has rescheduled a lot of his programs today to be with us and he is being so proactive in engaging with us. We've requested him to cover three areas, hydrogen, energy storage and the connect with the academia which he is so well-known for. I think Dr. Masalkar requires no introduction at all and one of the most popular, well-known figures in the country. Dr. Masalkar is the National Research Professor and has been the Director for the General Council of Scientific and Industrial Research, President of Indian National Science Academy, President of the UK Institution of Chemical Engineers and now also the President of the Global Alliance Research, Global Research Alliance. Dr. Masalkar has been on board of so many companies that it becomes difficult to count them. Amongst them are Reliance Industries, Tata Motors, Hindustan Unilever, Thermex, Piramid Enterprises, KPIT Technologies, etc. He is a doctor forty-four times over. I don't think there is anybody at par. He has received honorary doctorates from forty-four universities across the world. He is deeply connected with the innovation movement in India and has served as the Chairman of the National Innovation Foundation for eighteen long years from two thousand to two thousand eighteen. He has chaired Reliances Innovation Council, KPIT Technologies Innovation Council, Persistent Systems Innovation Council and Mariko Innovation Foundation Governing Council. In nineteen ninety-seven, Dr. Masalkar was named by Business India as amongst the fifty path breakers in post-independent India. We are really honored to have him here. In nineteen ninety-eight, Dr. Masalkar won the JRD Tata Corporate Leadership Award and he has been the only scientist so far to win it. He has received the Star of Asia Award at the hands of George Bush Senior, the former President of the United States of America. Perhaps we all know him as Padma Vibhushan, which he obtained in two thousand fourteen. But he has been awarded with the Padmasri in nineteen ninety-one, with the Padma Bhushan in two thousand and finally the Padma Vibhushan in two thousand fourteen. I am sure he deserves many much more such awards and accolades. There is nothing that one can say about him except that we personally sir are in awe of you and as we discussed that day when we spoke that we consider all of us in the electrical industry would like to consider you as our guru, as our dharaya and we as your shishas, your pupils, your disciples and therefore we look forward to connecting with you, to using your experience, your expertise, your guidance and as Vipul said, please forgive our ignorance because we are nothing in front of a man of such eminence as you. So please enlighten us with your address and post that my friend Mustafa Wajib might pick on your brains a little bit because he is very keen to understand how things are going forward. Let me once again emphasize that Dr. Masalkar has been extremely cooperative and he has gone out of his way to reschedule his program and must thank him once again for all the support that he has extended and personal thanks from the entire electrical industry across India and all the people across the world who have seen this program sir. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, thank you very much indeed. Let me share the screen. Yeah, can you see it?
Yes sir. You may like to do a full screen.
Thank you very much Vijayji for those very, very warm, very, very affectionate words. I am very grateful to you for this opportunity to EMA, to all of you. I am going to speak on green hydrogen and particularly I look at green hydrogen leading to a new green revolution interpreted in a very different context. And as usual, when such revolutions take place, India will always have lots of challenges but huge number of opportunities also. So I will like to cover these in my talk of next forty-five minutes or so. My thoughts, I would say, have been put into five buckets. The first is of course green hydrogen. There is a lot of hype over it and people still wonder whether it is a hype. But I am going to make a case that no, it has moved from hype to home. I am going to give some indication of what is the global scenario and then talk about what is the current Indian scenario. And then at the end, the something that is very close to my heart. I am a scientist, a researcher and I believe that when we talk about making India, it should not just be assembled in India. It has to be invented in India and make in India. And therefore I am going to focus on what the opportunities in research and development are and what would be the next scenario potentially what we can achieve. If you look at the hydrogen hype cycle so as to say, you can see that the first figure came in nineteen seventy-three when the oil crisis came. And then of course, as it happens, the hopes kept on rising. But in early two thousand, it was the peak of infected expectations, I would say. In fact, I remember I was the Director General of CSR from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand six and I still remember in early two thousand, India looking at hydrogen very, very seriously indeed. But later on, there was a trough of dis-illusionment, some quiet and then came the slope of enlightenment and I will explain to you why that came. And now there is a rapid deployment, that is the process that is being sort of followed. If you see the production pathways for hydrogen, let us be all on the same page as far as clean hydrogen is concerned. What are the raw materials for hydrogen production? Your water, your coal, your natural gas and you have solar and wind. Now, when you use, let's say, natural gas, water and coal and put it through a gasifier reformer, you of course produce hydrogen but you also produce carbon dioxide and that's why this is referred to as a gray hydrogen. Then it comes to blue hydrogen, which is actually, it captures and stores most of the carbon dioxide output that has come from the gasifier and reform. And then finally, of course, the green hydrogen, which is where the by-product is really oxygen because you split water in an electrolyzer. And this is the cleanest process and that's what we are trying to focus. So the movement is that currently we are producing gray hydrogen. We are moving to blue hydrogen but very quickly it will be transit to green hydrogen. Potential there is going to be huge. If you see the if you see the global scenario, you will find that there has been an exponential growth in hydrogen deployment worldwide. You will see that there are three fifty-nine large-scale hydrogen projects announced and fifty-three of them are by China. Sixty-nine gigawatt of electricity is announced globally. And by two thousand thirty, around five hundred ten billion US dollar investment have been announced. And as usual, China leads hundred million have been actually committed and you can see the distribution up here. So the message is exponential growth in hydrogen. The second one that we need to see is the expectations during two thousand nineteen, twenty and twenty-one, how they have risen. For example, you can see that two hundred percent increase in capacity additions have been announced from two thousand nineteen to twenty to twenty-one. So we are on an exponential growth. Now, investor funds, if you just see, there is a move in hydrogen investment activity with ten point six billion dollar flowing into these sector. And there you can quite clearly see that this is coming from private pockets, not just government support. That's very encouraging. If you look at the investment that are announced across the value chain because you have to talk about production of green hydrogen, distribution of green hydrogen and then of course, the use of green hydrogen. And you will find, for example, that in blue, we are showing the further investments that are needed and in black, we are showing those that are announced. So if you look at the required investments until twenty thirty, you can quite clearly see the blue part of it and the black part of it and it implies that we need even greater commitment that we have had so far in terms of green hydrogen. What one is also happy to see is that there is this, there are global policy initiatives to push hydrogen eruption. In fact, the prediction is that the hydrogen economy could provide twenty-two percent of global energy needs and around two point five trillion economy by twenty fifty. If you just see what is having around the world, I am giving a picture of the global scenario. Seventy-five plus countries have made zero carbon emission. Thirty-one countries are already creating national hydrogen strategies and more and more as we speak. There are different regions, different countries who are setting different goals like there is this ten, ten, ten energy minister targets in Europe. Where they talk about ten million FCEVs and ten thousand hydrogen fueling stations for the next ten years. It's a ten, ten, ten. Then Europe has put together more specific targets in terms of the electrolyzers and the green hydrogen, etc. France, Germany have announced their specific investments in electrolyzer capacity and in hydrogen economy. In the US, fifteen states have signed a moving for thirty percent tax. Will be sold with zero emission by twenty thirty, hundred percent by twenty twenty or twenty fifty. And China, huge target of one million fuel cell electric vehicles by twenty thirty and ten percent of energy by twenty forty. So I think the sense I am trying to give you when I am drawing the global picture is that there is excitement and investment together in all countries. And in a decarbonized world, the hydrogen demand is going to go up by factor of eight and you can see that practically every factor, aspect of our economy, whether it is power generation, transportation, breeding power, industry, new feedstock, existing feedstock, etc. You can see the kind of distribution that is going to take. In the long term, green hydrogen can become a niche fuel but all depends upon the cost of renewable electricity. So what are the factors that will create deep steep decline in green hydrogen costs? Now, in order to create the kind of fall that we want, first is of course lower LCOE. The, this is attainable with the kind of fall that we are looking at first. If solar or wind production costs are in this range, twenty to thirty USD per megawatt. The other one is the reduced CapEx force. Electrolyzer capacities are increasing, there is innovation that is going on there. And if this goes down by two fifty USD per KW, that would reduce the cost of hydrogen by one, two, three. Then the electrolysis plants, of course, the industrial scale packs, they are increasing their capacities compared to the small capacities TV, one, two, three, omega. That will, then of course higher capacity utilization factors, they can make a huge difference. And most importantly, favorable policies. I will likely need to consider the carbon impact, complexity of hydrogen infrastructure investment, future changes to carbon passing or import taxes, etc. When subsidies are phased out so that we ensure competitiveness to existing conventional fuels because they will keep on competing for cost. The other important part is the other important part is the hydrogen applications roadmap and this is a very important chart. You can see the different applications because finally the cost will depend upon the scale at which green hydrogen is used and the scale will depend upon the extent of applications in diverse industries. This is a very meaningful chart. What it shows is the existing hydrogen applications and the new hydrogen applications. Now, among the existing one, the dark line by the way, shows that hydrogen is competitive in average conditions and the dotted shows that under favorable conditions it can be competitive. So we have to move from dotted to full line. Now in full lines, as you can see in the existing, it is a feedstock ammonia, yes, it is already ethanol refining and steel and we have been talking about green steel, that will be taking some time to come as you can quite clearly see. And therefore, the extent of dotted means and extent of fullness will tell you the time it is going to take for the journey, like for example, forklifts. They are already in that particular space, so this is very important chart. And while looking at this, we should always be looking at this part, which is going to be the competition. The global commitment, talking about the global scenario, I want to emphasize that there is a huge global commitment. There are hundred nine companies from twenty-plus countries around the world. We have actually joined in to create additive costs. So the corporates are really getting together and serious. So I have covered two topics. First of all, how we are moving from hype to real hope as well as what is the global scenario. Now let's move to the Indian scenario. Why green hydrogen is a must for India? I think it's absolutely obvious. And the first is our one sixty billion dollar worth of imports of energy, hydrogen can reduce. And you can see the breakup that we have in import of coal, natural gas, coal, petroleum, etc. So we need to go. The second is of course the significant reduction in carbon dioxide emissions. If we have to meet that one point five degrees centigrade target and let's not just talk about what capita, in real terms, India is the world's third largest semiconductor with three point six gigatonnes of carbon dioxide equivalent across sectors and green hydrogen will break it. So that is first and second. And the third is, Honorable Prime Minister has announced the target of four fifty gigawatt of renewable energy by twenty thirty. The current capacity is hundred and the surplus electricity from India's renewable plants can also augment green hydrogen. So there are three reasons, I would say, at the top of the, of all the other reasons that we have because of which we should be thinking seriously and planning seriously and executing seriously the green hydrogen. Our Honorable Prime Minister in UN, he actually made an explicit statement. He said, India to become the world's biggest green hydrogen hub, he has set those targets and we are answerable to future generations with our decision-making and he is absolutely right there. And these are up to us leading to sort of partnership, like for example, Quark. You can see the four great leaders and by targeting green hydrogen, God hopes to strengthen and reduce the cost of all the elements along the value chain associated with green hydrogen. And I think that's something wonderful. So there is a deep commitment, global commitment that is coming. And I attach a lot of importance to this because I still remember the ozone layer depletion challenge where it came, Montreal protocol came and we wanted substitutes for chlorofluorocarbons. And I remember we wanted technology on HFC one, three, four, eight and nobody would give it to us despite the Montreal protocol. And I remember as DG of CSR, we started program with Institute of Chemical Technology to create our own indigenous technology and that took years obviously. But this time around, the mood seems to be different. I think people are, I mean, the nations are wanting to partner and that's a great news according. Then of course, very happy to see the National Hydrogen Energy Mission. It wants to deploy hydrogen energy for meeting not only need but also as an aspiration of a technology. I love this, I like aspirations of being there. Now, if you can see this mission, it is in phases of course. The first phase is to establish an environment towards mainstreaming green hydrogen, pilot projects, infra, R and D, etc. The second phase, measuring for mass scale adoption, commercialization of green. So the totally investments have been also worked out, the market opportunities have been worked out. But we require systematic sort of movement in this. There are a number of states. First of all, most important is greater market development for hydrogen. You know, whenever you talk about hydrogen, the first question that comes is that of creating supply is fine but where is the demand and creating that demand will require government policies. Then we have to have pilot projects to demonstrate viability in the various scenarios. There has to be infrastructure development, including using the existing natural gas imports, developing supply chains. And the specific zones, hydrogen hubs capable of supporting last-scale generation utilization. Indigenous manufacturing, you know, and as I said, make in India, Atmandirbar Bharat. But if you want to do Atmandirbar Bharat with Atman Vishwas, we have to not only make in India but invent in it. And of course, the policy support and most important is public awareness. Because as soon as you say hydrogen, oh my God, they say it will explode equally. So we have to communicate. In fact, in all, I mean, I was talking to Alan Finkel with the chief scientist of Australia and he is the one who has created the green hydrogen vision for Australia. And he was telling me how much effort they took to create public awareness through communications, having hundreds of meetings all across so that it becomes acceptable and India needs to do that. We can't take our people for granted, we must enlighten them with regard to the fact that hydrogen is non-toxic, hydrogen is very light, it can disperse very easily. The fact that we have a practice, industrial practice as well as safety protocols of using hydrogen and what we need to do, etc., that we cannot sort of underbank. So all these factors are going to be important. Now, what are the, what is the business potential for hydrogen? I would say in three sectors, there is enormous hydrogen demand potential that has to be done. One will be green hydrogen electrolyzer, second will be hydrogen supply and distribution and third would be fuel system. In terms of green hydrogen electrolyzer, we are looking at global hydrogen market increase by eight times. That's a great need. Then you has already mandated forty gigawatt of green hydrogen production that represents two hundred times increasing price of. Then there is the hydrogen supply and distribution. India's hydrogen demand growth will go by five X as a matter of fact. And we need to meet it with supply and distribution cost which will be less than one dollar per kg. Then there will be green hydrogen export demand from Paris countries. In fact, if you just think about, when you are exporting green hydrogen, it is like exporting sunshine. In fact, if you just think about it, when you are exporting green hydrogen, it is like exporting sunshine. Because India is indoor with great sunshine, all three hundred days out of a sort of a year. And when you are using their renewable electricity based on sunlight to split water. Actually, that is the export that we're doing. Then of course, we are sell systems, they will present twenty percent of commercial vehicles by twenty thirty. And that means seventy three thousand annual production of F C units. And we should not be importing this over a period of, we should not be depending upon the balance of this world. We should be developing it on our. And of course, replacement of DG sets for backup power by fuels is, I'll give a separate slide at the end to tell you about what. Normal scope this has for example. So I think the first point is there is enormous hydrogen demand. The second point is opportunity to create leading new energy companies. Why? First of all, in green hydrogen electrolyzer, there is no global scale of fully integrated green hydrogen. The current global electrolyzer manufacturing requirement cannot be exponentially growing. And then there is an opportunity, a significant role across green hydrogen chain in India and for export. So that is this one. The second is in supply and distribution. So electricity plants are distributed solar path, distribution of hydrogen. Over four hundred eighty kilometers can bring down the cost of supply in large scale. Carbon fiber based cylinder contraction. You know, I mean, look at Lance, for example, they have billions of tons of polypropylene that's being produced. That propylene can be going for oxidation, polyacronate, carbon fiber. And we can become the biggest producer and cheapest producer of carbon fibers as in the world active. And even exporting. So we have that possibility. Then integration of liquefaction ammonia plants for the exothermic plants. They are located near eastern ports so that it becomes easy for sport, local shipping. And then fuel cell system, total cost of ownership of fuel cell vehicles will become superior. I see vehicles, the price is around three dollars, capex is half of I C V. This is possible if the fuel cell systems cost less than one fifty dollar per KW. And I will later on show how India has been actually able to develop this for less than one fifty dollar. And then finally manufacture of hundred kilo fuel cell systems. If you look at the hydrogen value chain in the hydrogen production, distribution, supply chain. And in applications, we have an opportunity. So reducing the cost of clean hydrogen will be the key driver to actually transition to hydrogen. That's extremely important because for India, the most important part is that of affordable excellence. Getting very high quality which is had green. But getting it affordably is going to be the key. And India is a master in doing ten X, ten times better, ten times cheap. And therefore, lot of R and D and other activities will have to actually focus and I have listed out, I will not go into the detail. How in each case, there is a possibility of reduction of that cost. The building blocks of fuel cell systems and development of hydrogen powered mobility. We have to ensure that our industry does not have knockdown technologies, but they have state of the art technology. They have next gen technology. And there, we have to look at different options basically because we can't start from zero and build everything. So I always talk about five options. The first option is buy if the technology is available and we cut it. Second is to make when nobody gives us that technology, we have done sort of all the time with the supercomputers or cryogenic engines. The third is buy to make better. Because on a T R L level, that is technology readiness level, you can't get everything at T R L nine. But some of them may be T R L seven, eight, maybe three. So pick them up and sort of build them up. Then make to buy better because many times competitors will not be willing to give you the technologies. But if you make them, they will come and then sort of offer the technologies. We have seen that in many, many sectors and finally make it together and I'm going to come to that. How we can create public private partnerships to basically move there. The, we have to look at what we can do in near term, what we can do in midterm. And what we can do in long term, in the near term. We can ride on the renewable energy passes to produce green hydrogen for export and captive cluster consumption for refining things for fertilizers etcetera. In the midterm, stationary backup power generation and color agnostic to see internal transportation demand to start with. We have to start with gray blue and then sort of green. So initially to get it started, we can't simply jump to green, it takes some time. And in the long term, with grid balancing as well as exporting hopefully green steel and cement becomes possible. That's a long term vision. I've given details in terms of actual numbers in these slides. So the opportunities for our industry, electrical electronics industry, I want to emphasize. Is across the world, production, transportation storage as well as utilization. Let's specifically talk about electrical power electronics companies in the hydrogen value chain. And of course, this is obvious to you in the hydrogen value chain across how power electronics plays a role. Take for example specifically the fuel cells. You can see here the solid oxide fuel cell battery and supercapacity powered renewable generation system. And these smart bi-directional electrical interfacing and control systems. For dynamic operation are the key. So you have both hardware and software, so as to say, opportunity in this. And if you see that the electrolysis is integrated with renewable energy sources for green hydrogen production. And therefore, the, in the power network, you have opportunities for electrical electronics and other systems. With several key components that are displayed here, they are all familiar to you. This is very elementary for you, so I will not talk about it. Just want to assure you that as this business grows. You will have billions of dollars of opportunities. And you can see the major player, for example, like G Simmons, E B B, T K Fong etcetera. As solution providers already in this space, whether it is source side, whether it is transport side with three D C, three S etcetera. And whether it is on the electrolyzer side. Indian industry should be finding an important place at the top of the table here. So I have covered so far the green hydrogen hype to hope global scenario, what is the Indian scenario. Now I come to something that is very close to my heart. I'm a scientist, a researcher. And I always believe it's not just make in India, it's assembled in India, just to be making India. We have seen, for example, in mobile. In two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen, the Indian mobile manufacturing, which was just based on assembling. What happened? Its share went from sixty percent to eight, nine percent and Chinese went from eight, nine percent to sixty percent. Why? Because we are, we are just assembling. So we have to have our sort of research innovation. In full street. Now who are the players? Of course academia when it comes to fundamentals, national research laboratories and startups. I'm delighted to see by the way, the way the startups are moving, but we need to move in this space. Because we have too many tomatoes and too many other sort of startups. But in this space, it is difficult to sort of get startups. So how to promote that? And this requires a really patient capital. You can't have, now and if you just see, for example, in the last six months. Twenty, the first half, twenty seven point one billion dollar investment has come. By the way, in startups, which is huge. But you will find hardly any in sort of startups connected with green energy and so on. Because you can't make a fast buck, it has to be sort of patient capital where government also comes in. Then of course, industry, public sector as well as private sector, they do enough R and D. But most important is public private partnership where all of us get together to sort of do it. Team India, as I call it. And finally, of course, global partnerships, basically that as I said a little earlier. So let us go through that. Now, if you look at private sector R and D, I'm very happy to see that there are some bold things that are already happening. You know, not just copying or reverse. Sort of move forward like Dr. Vijay Kerkar and I are founding directors of Sentinel Lab. Which our visionary leader, Mr. Ravi Pandit, you know, of K P I T technology has created. It's a new technology that have floated. But here we are looking at a very different approach by the way. It is based on the agri waste, two hundred million tons per year of agri waste is there. And there is a forty two million hectare barren land, okay? So can we do energy farming? And for that, there are, there is already a new energy can, which can give up to forty metric tons per acre of bar. That's huge. That has been created. Also, there is a breakthrough technology for producing hydrogen by microbial conversion of agri waste that is rich in cellulose and human cellulose. To hydrogen and that's produced currently at two fifty rupees per kg and it can go down further. So already we are talking about three to four dollars per kg on. Most importantly, our honorable Prime Minister always talks about increasing the income of the farmers. Basically, this can provide that income. And most importantly, decentralize green hydrogen production, okay? That is going to be the key. In fact, I say the three Ds are going to be important. Digitalization, decentralization and decarbonization. As you can see, they are all linked and decentralization is extremely important for a country like India. So local job creation and it's a kind of a human situation. And here also, the government policies will play a very, very critical role. Then of course, big companies like IOC, the partnerships are getting formed particularly in R and D. I welcome that very much, both green as well as blue hydrogen, like Norwegian. And Indian R and D institutions that have been signed up recently. Public, private industries getting together, for example Tata Motors in IndiNoi. They Tata Motors source seventy KW fuel cell models from Canada. Eight quarter barrel power systems and they are ready. But as I said, that is fine for now, but later on we'll have to develop our own systems to move. So we have shown that capacity. Now I come to national labs of CSR. You know, I had the fortune of leading CSR for eleven and a half years. We have forty laboratories. And more than twenty thousand people working there. And National Chemical Laboratory, National Physical Laboratory, National Meteorological Laboratory, you take a sector and they are there. And we actually got into this fairly early by the, before even the talk started, different laboratories. Like Central Chemical Engineering Research Institute in Sichri, Karakuru was already doing some work. National Physical Laboratory, already doing some work, National Chemical Laboratory, already doing some work. But now this is getting consolidated. We have an outstanding leader, Dr. Shekhar Mandi. And we are outstanding scientists like Dr. Ashish Lele with the director of N C R. Under their guidance, this entire effort is getting regulated. In what areas we are, and I mentioned this specifically because some of you might want to partner and should partner with this laboratory. In electrolysis, for example, we are focused on PM electrolyzers. As well as solid oxide fuel cells. In gasification as well as pyrolysis, there is a lot of very important work that is going on. Then also in different like compressed gas hydrogen or liquid oxygen. Hydrogen carriers on hydrates on membranes, there is a work that is going on. Because we have to look at multiple options, like for example hydrates, you know. If you really get a breakthrough in terms of absorption of hydrogen, as a matter of fact, it could be a game changer. And one has seen potential for this or this liquid oxygen hydrogen carriers. Hydrogenate and dehydrogenate to create hydrogen. So it is transported as a liquid and compressed gas, of course. It is, most work is going to be on carbon fiber based composition processing. How can we sort of master that? And of course, in membranes, there is a lot of external work that is going. Then in terms of utilization, both stationary transport as well as in the steel sector. There is a lot of work that is going on. And you can see the lead laboratories here. In each case, there are not one but two, three laboratories that are actually working together. So this slide actually shows you overall, whether it is gasification, electrolyzers. How so many laboratories are coming together to work photo electrochemical in terms of hydrogen generation. Similarly, the hydrogen storage in terms of materials, tanks, walls, sensors. And in hydrogen utilization, fuel cells as well as solar, how this work is going on. So right from generation to storage to utilization, there is work that's. Now, I want to basically focus on the way forward. You will say, yeah, those national laboratories are there, industry is here, how do we bring them together? Okay, now that is going to be the most critical part. And I remember doing a bold experiment in year two thousand. It was called New Millennium Indian Technology Leadership Initiative. What is the keyword in all this? Leadership. It was set up in year two thousand. I'm a bit tired of being a follower. We have to become a leader. Now, that became India's biggest public private partnership in technology. It was based on Indian talent, Indian technology and trust in our India. And what we did was that there were grand challenges that we put up, seeking game changing solutions, you know. And to become a world leader in affordable excellence. I love this term affordable excellence because whenever something is affordable, you say it can't be excellent. Whenever it is excellent, you say it can't be affordable. India proves it in a, in a, in a. And then we created board financial instruments. Can you just imagine public private partnership? We said public institutions will get grant, but private sector will get money at zero percent interest rate, which later on. It became three percent, but the interest rates were very high at that time, nine percent, ten percent, so on. So it was very low interest rate. But interestingly. The loan to be returned only if you are successful. So it was not venture capital, it was adventure capital. And risk was the key because in a sense we were trying to achieve targets. Which were not sort of achieved before, right? For example, a two thousand dollar laptop, can you do three two hundred dollar? And we did come out with a model bank, but there was something else that was missing in public procurement policy and others because of which it did not go far. But there are other areas which I will show. And most importantly, not just best practice but next practice. I'm tired of everybody saying I'm following the best practice. Hey, what? That means you are not following. You create the next practice which other will follow. Is it possible? Yes, we demonstrated that it is actually possible. So I'll just give you an example, we went way back by the way, now we talk about fuel cell this etcetera. Way back in two thousand six, we started this program where the P F M C. Ecosystem we wanted to create, of course, there was a fundamental research and innovation. Then demonstration on on field validation in P P P technology development, but most importantly, vendor developer. Something that national labs sort of. And we did that because of an experience, because finally you will find that one missing component. I mean, I, I remember we were having this ambitious target of SARS fourteen seater aircraft. All right. I mean, thousands of components, but there was one component, starter generator, which got onto entities list. And our project got deleted. And therefore, it is extremely important to be Atmandirban in this. And this is of course the hydrogen to electricity, the fuel cell, the challenge was. And this is of course the hydrogen to electricity, the fuel cell, the challenge was, technology is guarded, the capex was very high, and there were associated issues with hydrogen infrastructure. And most importantly, like I said, be a leader. And I remember not following but leading in new knowledge. For example, there were advanced electrode materials that were created, you know, they were all new. Hybrid electrode materials, high-spectrum cathode, raw scalpel cathode, non-platinum electrode, uh, 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 cathode, multi-function materials, et cetera. Similarly, polymer advanced, uh, polymer, you know, creating novel groups, uh, new copolymers, et cetera. The word new, the word novel was written all over, and there were twenty-five plus patents, basically, coupled with sort of papers. So creation of new knowledge, not just following but leading, that was the basic issue. And the, uh, uh, fact that, uh, we did, uh, vendor development within India for every single part. You can see the difference, you know, eh, with imported components, uh, on a lab scale, of course, it was three lakh per KW. Once we started the indigenous components, it came down to half. And we are confident that if we have the economy of scale, we are talking about an error of seven, uh, seventy-five hundred per KW. You remember I said one fifty dollar per KW, this is already a hundred dollar per KW, if we sort of move from, uh, here to here, that is the advantage of what I'm basically. Let me just show summary slide, for example. Uh, this is a, uh, three KW P A filter system that has been developed, uh, by, uh, other laboratories. And, uh, this, uh, is ideal for telecom tower applications, I will just show you. And as you know, Ravi Pandit, uh, here in the director of N C L, you can see with this car, uh, this is an indigenous we developed, uh, F C stack based on C S I's, uh, know-how and this is a technology. Uh, it has an onboard type of, uh, type-three hydrogen storage tank, uh, at three fifty bar, giving a range of about two fifty kilometers. So we have our own, most importantly, even going forward, for example, the reject hit from stack, can we generate, uh, so this, uh, technology was actually released by our honorable president and Minister of Science and Technology. This is all result of this new millennium Indian technology leadership initiative. And this shows that we are capable of being Indian talent, Indian technology, but trust is the most important thing in our search. And, uh, of course, technology has to be backed up by bold policy. For example, if you look at mobile towers, I'm just giving you a case example. Uh, the market is six hundred thousand, I mean, you look at six hundred thousand towers, there are, uh, components that will be, uh, required, uh, if you are to put fuel cells there, this will be the number of systems that we have. And, uh, if you do that, twenty thousand new jobs would be created, we are looking for new jobs. But most importantly, look at this, two point four million metric tons carbon dioxide emission can be prevented with green methane, max reduction by seventy-five percent. What we require is a policy. So, supposing we say that given a year and replace all the diesel generators, not two years, uh, or even shorter, uh, your, or honorable Prime Minister likes to give bigger challenges. Uh, so supposing we give that, this could be done, but technology and policy will, uh, then have to sort of work together. You can just see the kind of difference it can basically make. Uh, I'd like to end, uh, in five minutes, uh, which has to do with, uh, uh, sort of, uh, I, I am personally believe that we need, uh, our country needs a new mantra. And that is not walking or running, not leapfrogging, but pole walking. And this particular book, Ravi Pandit and I wrote in two thousand nineteen, I'm very proud to say, got the best business book of the year award. Not bad for a scientist to write best business book of the year award. Of course, Ravi is, uh, also not a scientist. And, uh, uh, where you say, what is this idea of leapfrogging to pole walking, where did it come from? You know, I've been chairman of Reliance Innovation Council, as was mentioned, now the Unity Council. And there, the dictum is, uh, growth is life, and innovation is a way of life. You combine the two, it is innovation-led growth, okay? But now, as we can see, it is not innovation-led growth, innovation-led exponential. And then it can't be incrementally innovation, it has to be disruptive game-changing innovation. And one day, we came by and I had, uh, sort of a talk, and we were talking about, uh, he said, you know, doc, we must leapfrog here, so on, then let's, uh, he said, let's, uh, do you think? Uh, what does, uh, leapfrogging mean? Frog leaps a few feet, because he's afraid of the predator. He's afraid of the competitor, I mean, uh, and should we be afraid of the competitor and jump a few feet? Or should we pole walk? The size of the pole is the size of aspiration. And we created actually a leadership program called Beyond Us. Young people who are capable of thinking beyond the realms of possibilities and pole walking. And you can quite clearly see the India pole vaulted from one fifty feet to number one position, uh, in mobile data usage infrastructure. It did not leapfrog from one fifty feet to a hundred, one fifty feet to number one position. And you can see the kind of difference it made, the pole walking to change the game, as a matter of fact. Uh, four G Ulti phone, the cost of, uh, dramatically, like I say, always ten X, fifty X. The data per GB cost, four rupees per GB, cheapest in the world. Why is it twenty each? We are fond of talking about, uh, uh, you know, missed call, missed call is a, you are not paying, you are, uh, you know, the telecom company is paying, no, you can't help it, this was a game changer. So can we have that spirit, so as to say? And in, in, in new energy. And I'm very happy to see, if you go back to July sixteen, twenty twenty, because I actually announced, uh, that, uh, uh, he would make it as a net carbon neutral company by twenty thirty-five. And within a year, this is July sixteen, twenty twenty, within a year, he talked about investments in, uh, you know, seventy-five thousand crore, uh, and making four gigafactories, uh, in sort of three years and then further investment. But he also announced this new energy council, I, of which I happen to be the chairman. We have world's views who actually were members, like Martin Green. Eighty percent of, uh, uh, solar installations in the world, they carry his technology, pulp technology, uh, uh, you know, he's a master. So it is like, Mr. Solar, Mr. Wind, Mr. Carbon Capture, and this has been a lot of, uh, fun. And this was the announcement, so I'm not giving any secret, this came up, uh, in the history. And it is, uh, leveraging its strengths in terms of integration, innovation and investment, doing it speed scale and sustainability, and also combining digitalization, decentralization, decarbonization. And lastly, of course, aspirations are our possibilities. So just a month ago, he announced this, uh, awe-inspiring, uh, objective that, uh, uh, he said efforts are globally on, uh, to reduce hydrogen costs. But India has always set and achieved even more ambitious goals, and he set this target of making India the first country globally to achieve one dollar per kilogram in one decade, that is one-one-one. And you know, it is interesting, I picked up something in July, when can Mukesh Ambani do a G O with India's green energy space? You know, half a billion customers getting the benefit of four rupees per GB and zero voice. And actually on September fourth, there is, uh, this airline of the Kalamani promise is a G O for it. So geification, uh, I, I think as, as, as a, uh, as a spirit, I think is very important. And why not? By the way, people, um, I mean, they call me dangerous optimist, so this is a slide of a dangerous optimist, I'm dangerously optimistic about my India. We have done, world's fastest, largest financial inclusion through JAM, Chandan Yojana, Aadhaar and Mumbai. We combined policy, technology, workflow innovation, system delivery innovation, and did that, isn't it? World's fastest and largest jump in mobile data consumption, I'm just not sure how we jumped from one fifty to the first. World's fastest and largest deployment of E R Ds. Within seven years, the penetration went from point eight percent to eighty-eight percent. Costs coming down by factor of seven, and huge change. Uh, that, that, as you can, uh, quite clearly see, uh, we were the first country to do it that way. So why can't we do world's fastest and largest transition from gray hydrogen to green hydrogen? Can we do it? Can India do it? Well, the dangerous optimist in me says, yes, it can. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, sir. Thank you, Dr. Marshall, for that wonderful presentation on green hydrogen. And as it, the technology has to be supported by bold policy decisions, that is very, very encouraging, sir. I would now call upon Mr. Mustafa Vajin, uh, M D Meherpoot, for the summing up the session, this session.
Yeah, thank you, Kriti. And, uh, sir, as always, uh, uh, I, I had switched off my video because I was trying to create an Excel sheet and put in things that you were saying. So it's been a long time since I did that, and I obviously not as fast enough as I would like to be. Your initials are R A M. What we just heard was an energy Ramana. And, uh, I think that's very important for all of us, uh. Uh, my Excel sheet calculation showed me that even if we want to convert twenty-five percent of India's ene- energy, primary energy consumption to green nitrogen, we'll need about four hundred gigawatts of electricity. Uh, I, I, I'm subject to correction because I'm trying to write an, uh, algorithm as we speak on an Excel sheet, so it's not completely sure, but I'm quite sure it's within plus minus ten percent of that, uh, with some factors taken into account. Uh, the opportunity is obviously, uh, couldn't have been better highlighted. Uh, my request is that, uh, this sixty-one slide presentation, uh, I don't, I, I didn't realize how time went by. Uh, if you can kindly share it, sir, uh, it will serve as a kind of a primer.
I have, I have already shared it, by the way. I already shared it with, uh.
I think each one of us in the industry should take, uh, some time off and read it on a daily basis. And, uh, just like how if you read the Ramana regularly today, you realize many new things. Uh, it depends on how old you are actually. But, uh, it's always an un, sort of enlightening experience irrespective of, uh, how many times you've read it. Every time is a new experience, I'm sure we will have similar experience. So with your consent, I would like to call it, uh, uh, using your initial as an energy Ramana, so to speak. Having said that, uh, it is obvious that electrolyzing technology requires enormous amount of DC power, uh, which means that there is lot of power conversion involved, there is lot of, uh, transformers and substations involved, uh, which have to be customized for rectification, because these, uh, rectification is a very unique type of load. Uh, the only time we were challenged with it was in caustic zone uplands, and also into some extent in the old traction systems where, uh, railways were using DC, now, now even they have shifted to AC. So we see a reversal of, uh, or rather, re-emergence of DC loads as a very serious issue, because four hundred gigawatt of DC load is not a joke, it can destabilize the bridge. Power quality considerations that will come up. So on the production side, sir, even on the electrolysis side, uh, we, we will come back to you. Maybe there is something to be done in the industry which can also be relevant from the alkaline approach, which I think should be the better approach for India because we don't need to depend on esoteric materials. Uh, would like to of course have your reactions on that, but that's a different discussion for a deeper analysis for another day. Uh, I think the second box which you mentioned about transportation and, uh, storage, that's a very curious area, many technologies are going to come up, whether it's compression liquefaction, uh, and so on, so forth, or using metal hydrates. Uh, I think there's a whole big role for electrical industry, they have to empower it. But as you rightly pointed out in one slide, the, the huge opportunity, the larger value opportunity is in the utilization space. And, uh, those three circles that you have drawn, and, uh, the utilization circle shows the least investment. I think that's, that's where the, uh, government policy and other things also become relevant. Uh, it's, it's too much to digest in a forty-five minute session. Uh, any attempt to over-digest it will cause, uh, indigestion. So I think we need to gradually digest it. Uh, so otherwise, uh, as a, I must admit that I tend to overeat at times, and I'm tempted to do that here, uh, in an analogous manner. So we'll definitely come back to you on, on these issues. But one of the concerns, sir, is that, uh, the policy from the government side also needs to evolve and act as an enabler in this whole thing. So if you could just kind of, uh, share your few thoughts on that in a brief, in a brief manner, what do you think?
Well, uh, I'm not in the government anymore, uh, as you know, uh, basically, uh, so I can't speak on behalf of the government. But all that I would say is that, uh, the indications are that there is a bold thinking that is, uh, uh, sort of on the end, that's for sure. And the kind of, I mean, I like, uh, targets look unviable, but they have to be backed up by policies. Basically, not on paper but actually execution, I think that is very important, like the opportunity I showed. If we have six hundred thousand telecom towers, okay? And there are, uh, the diesel generating sites are created in, uh, Havok, replacing them with fuel cells. So therefore, uh, green hydrogen, uh, coming in, with a set of policy you can do. And you know, so I think, and also, uh, I have seen, not only our Prime Minister, but, uh, Ms. Mithin Garkari, for example, thinking has been always big in terms of what he has done. So we have the time, I remember when giving the upcare awards. Uh, I've been the chairman of the upcare awards committees for a number of years. And, uh, at that time, our Minister, uh, Boel, uh, actually just announced that this is what he's going to do in LEDs. You know, it looked impossible at the time, it says by demand aggregation and creating systems, uh, we will achieve this within, uh, uh, this time, it looked impossible. And then actually, uh, within, uh, a sort of, uh, no time, uh, but you saw what, what I said, as a matter of fact, the kind of, uh, uh, sort of, uh, uh, that have taken place in terms of LED. So if intentions, I mean, I'm just naming these three and others, but if, uh, thoughts are converted into actions, uh, you know, in the manner, in the example that I have, uh, so, sort of given, it becomes entirely possible, that was my last slide. Even in JAM, for example, you know, we survived, uh, uh, the, uh, challenge of the pandemic by transporting money to the poorest of the poor, because we had, uh, close to four hundred million, uh, sort of, uh, these accounts. But those, uh, accounts were created by a bold policy coupled with, uh, technology. So it's a combination of all these that will have to go hand in hand, that's all that I would say, so I'm, uh.
Sir, we will seek your assistance in helping, uh, EMA to for, approach the government to formulate policies in this regard, because the electrical industry is deeply involved. And, uh, of course, another very important thing that I think everybody should realize is that we need to show a lot more effort on the fuel cell side as an industry. And, uh, I'm so sort of inspired by what has been said and what has been done, including at C S I R. I think many members of our industry should come forward and, and look seriously at becoming fuel cell producers going forward. Uh, using technology and using maybe, as you gave options, you know, you can always buy technology to improve it also. And, and that's something that we need to examine. So we are here in a curious situation, sir, we have your energy Ramana now, which is what I'm going to call this. But at another level, we have a request which I am repeating, actually, I told you this on the telephone the other day. And that is that we are officially designating you as Dronacharya. And, uh, all of us are your Shishias, and, uh, since you, uh, you have given us the consent, uh, I think you are now going to experience the nuisance value of all of us coming to you from time to time, asking stupid questions, but we need your guidance, like all Shishias need the guru's guidance. So that, with that, uh, particular note, I don't want to elongate the session further, but I am very grateful. Uh, I think this was an eye-opener, uh, you, we regard you as our great guru. We will come to you, we will trouble you, please be patient with us, don't, don't chase us away. Please use the stick on us when you feel it is appropriate, don't worry about it. And we will, we will be glad to sit at your feet and learn on this. Thank you so much. Namaskar. That means may God keep you in good health and well, in wellness.
Thank you, thank you so much. You have been so kind, so gracious, so affectionate, thank you so.
Back to you, Vijay.
Thank you, Vijayji, bye-bye.
Thank you, uh, Mustafa, sir. I would like to now invite, uh, Mr. Hamzar Sehwal, Vice President EMA and C M D Stent Limited, to propose the vote of thanks, please.
Dr. Mush is, uh, it's gone off, I think, possibly, but I'll do the formalities, I mean, it was absolutely stunning, I would say, really. Just, uh, you know, I was expecting something on, you know, on. Just, you know, I was expecting something on, you know, going back to school and on chemistry and all, but it was not just chemistry. It was a combination of science, economics and a complete business plan. It was truly inspirational. I mean, learning from him about green hydrogen and the, and the way forward was absolutely, absolutely inspirational. He was also. Very happy and let speak to us actually at this, not take him. I mean, in the, to us actually, the amount of information, you know, I'm glad that he shared the presentation with us. And I think he said that we need to absorb bit by bit every day. And it's like going to be a, you know, every morning or sometime of the day when you read it, it's going to be a huge inspiration for all of us, I'm sure. So, but you know, I'd like to thank Vijay for bringing him on board today on stage, giving us this opportunity to actually hear from him. And really blessed to have him over here. I think basically a few takes which I would like to mention is that, you know, the importance of each two for India, which he mentioned is reduction of imports, reduction of, you know, carbon CO2 emissions. And the target of four fifty gigawatts renewable by twenty twenty. And you know, these are the factors which are really critical for India. I think we should all take this very positively and stand committed in that moment and you know, this mission to position India as a technology leader in H two. Or we should be, you know, completely committed to that as well. So I would, you know, request my colleagues and the. On behalf of the industry. Dr. Mush is not here now, of course, but on, you know, as a take that basically we, we are very robust, we're committed. And we will take forward this initiative to ensure that, you know, we are in keeping with the government's plans, which is also, you know, going to be extremely beneficial to our industry as a whole as well. The another take which I'd like to mention is that he repeatedly mentioned this make in India thing. It's not just about us assembling in India, you know, as a, as an objective of making India, it's actually conceptualizing, inventing in India. And that's what making India is all about. So I think these were a few points which I'd just like to mention. And on that note, I'd like to once again thank Vijay and Vipul and Charu for bringing, taking this initiative forward and making me a part of it as well. Thank you very much. Thank you, Prakriti, for, for this phenomenal afternoon. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Vice President. And we come to the close of this special plenary session now. Now, the next session line is a panel discussion on policy and markets. Once again, the ten minutes speakers with us. We'll take a quick pause of two seconds and we'll be back with you. Please take it.